Can you see? In life, but so crying we have. As a smile. To crush right and right on. For the right of me watch. Where's the gas? Be free. And I will be. Be. And I. There. Oh, say. For the thing. And I'm. I'm.
All right, welcome. Thank you so much. I'm Logan County School and all those representatives here today. Thank you for being all of us, Logan County High School ambassadors. Lily Ann Harris, Kennedy Haynes, Jamie Barrow, Sophie Spears, Lacy Plummer, Bill Gaddis, Cole Crawford, Kennedy Haddon, Zoe Sissoko, and Jayron Jefferson. It was lovely to be welcomed by those smiling faces this afternoon. And as I know all of these students home today, keep in mind that they are here on their Fall Break. The National Anthem was sung by Adriana Kobian. And many thanks to the Logan County High School JROTC. The members of the Color Guard, Jeffrey Chris, Erin Hudon, Brett Triplet, and McKenna Hinton. Thank you so much for the pomp and circumstance of the warm welcome to the meeting. And this time I'd like to turn it over for welcoming for Lieutenant Paul Muller, Logan County's.
Thank you, Dr. Young, and Dr. Glass, and everyone in the state board for being here today. It's always wonderful when we can bring people together to celebrate our students. It is Fall Break, but to have students going to sing and have Color Guard here and have greeters here. It's a, it just, I think it adds something special to it. It gets back to what we're all about, correct? We're about students. So first of all, I want to say, on behalf of Logan County Board of Education, I'd like to welcome the State Board of Education and the Post-Secretary Council to Logan County Career Technical Center. We are honored to host these state meetings over the next couple of days. The building that we're in was, it broke ground, January, August 2016. The old building in January of 2018. They went from around 40,000 square feet in the old building to over 80,000 square feet. Lots of new equipment and a renewed new excitement for career technical education in Logan County, Russell, and Todd County. I would like to thank, we do have some folks here today that I'd like to recognize. We do have the Chair of the Board of Logan County Schools, Mr. Kenny Robertson. Though we've already thanked Andrea Kobian for singing, as well as the JROTC and the greeters and Colonel Triplet. The ambassadors and our career technical staff here in Logan County. He, talk about these three folks real quick. There are only 171 superintendents across the Commonwealth. And I'm blessed to work closely with two of the very best. Dr. Larry Bagley and Mark Thomas are not only true leaders, but they're wonderful friends. I would like to welcome Russell Superintendent, Dr. Bagley, and Todd County Superintendent, Mark Thomas. These leaders send their students from their districts to the Logan County Career Technical Center each day. And we work together to better serve our communities and better serve our students. I want to thank you both for being here today. I'd also like to thank Career Technical Center Principal, Ms. Beth Rowe. Beth has, she's hosting you all over the next two days. But also, she's been the principal since we opened here in 2018. And before that, when we were across town in Russell, she was a teacher there and became the principal. And then made the transition across. The biggest thing that I want to say about Beth is we just really appreciate her leadership. There's been so many changes in career technical education. We know that, we know how important it is to have young people going into careers and the opportunities that they have. And Beth has done a great job. One of the, I haven't seen Leslie Slaughter, but I know we've worked with Leslie really close in developing our health academy here. And so, we're really excited about that. Little introduction to Logan County Schools. First, I'd like to say we do have two blue ribbon schools. Auburn, Auburn School, as well as a derever school of both national blue ribbon schools. Also on this screen, you'll see a student doing their, their defensive learning. And also you'll see that on the national forum at the bottom, we are one of 17 school districts across America to have all of our member schools designated a national middle school style. Recently, we were asked to take part in the League of Innovative Schools. And we went through that additional promise. We went through that interview process. And we were, we were selected as one of only 28 districts, schoolwide, nationwide, to be added this school year. Over three plus years ago, on far right, you'll see this strategic plan. And that's what I'm going to go over with you as quick as I can, but also give it its due diligence. Over three plus years ago, Logan County Schools released our district strategic plan after a year and a half of development. This plan involves students, staff, community, and administrative input. We are proud to let you know that our facilitator for putting this plan together was Dr. Lou Young, currently now the State Chair of Board of Education, right? We want to, we want to say thank you to Lou, thank you to our community. The biggest thing I want to say about that was we had tremendous, tremendous public support. Dr. Young, you remember how we said that many few weeks ago, how many surveys responses we had?
Well over a thousand.
We had well over a thousand responses to our community. So that's what I want to go through real quickly is our strategic plan. This is a plan that we developed. It wasn't just put on a shelf and collected dust. This is something that we've worked towards every day. And we strive to meet the needs of our students and our staff. First and foremost, one of our strategic plans was bringing the profile of success to life. This profile was developed to help students cultivate the skills necessary to be successful beyond K-12 education in the classroom. The profile was created in this room. We had over 200 community members in this room. We had political leaders, we had students, we had staff, we had parents. And we said, hey guys, we're pretty good at a bubble test. We're really good at, in fact, we're really good at a bubble test in Logan County and in Russell. So what do we need to do? What steps do we need to do? What are we not saying to you? This is not a day for public education to tell you. This is a day for us to listen to you. We listened to them and grew there. They did cards and they learned the snows and we think, right? What day it felt was important. We have a lot of advanced manufacturing in our community. Logan, being you know, is a large employer. And this is what we came up with. We came up with a profile of success. I know lots of people call it a graduate profile. I would make my pitch to say, a graduate profile sounds like something the hospital's supposed to do. Profile of success sounds like something K-12 is supposed to do. So that's why we landed on profile of success. And I will say, being called a profile of success came from our LC innovators. And I will talk to you about them in just a minute. Over the past three years, our district has partnered with Learn and Center Collaborative and Dr. Katie Martin. What's exciting about that work is last spring, our students in grades three, five, eight, and 12 participated in their first defensive learning presentation. Students were able to showcase their learning and understanding of these commoncies. Thus demonstrating their skills as identified in this profile. Student ownership of their own success is extremely exciting. And how powerful it is in creating students and their love of learning. In phase two of our strategic, and you do have a copy of this strategic plan, I guess. Phase two of the strategic plan, a lot of graphics up here. We continue to, what we want to do here is grow highly effective educators. Between teacher shortages and hiring options, six teachers and emergency certification, we know that's a challenge. And we need to support those new teachers, the new teachers, as they can transition past the first few years of, in education. So we do offer a new teacher academy at the district level. Also each school, each of our schools, we've got five K-8s, a high school, and a career technical center. Each of our schools also require to have their own new teacher academy. We have a new teacher academy supported at the district level. A new teacher academy supported at each particular school. And I know that we've not received funding, and I know that we're way a while behind for K-10. But we never stop K-10. Our new teachers are, we changed the K-10 L slogan. We have L-TIP, and we still assign, they get mentors, they still have to meet same requirements as the old K-10 system because we felt that teachers and new teachers needed that support. The ultimate programs up there like UK Next Gen, the Buck Institute, PBO Works, N Leader 21, project lead the way we do launch. We're just at the elementary school level, but project lead the way right now. What we do launch across the district. One I do want to say a little bit about is, is our LC innovators. And you say, oh, let's see, the LC innovators. LC innovators are this. We ask the teachers across our district, for no additional stipend, no additional, nothing additional. They would be a part of training and being part of making our profile come to life. And we have people from every school volunteer to do that. And they have been integral in us developing not only our commoncies, but how we assess them in each grade level, what the expectations are. We've also worked on, as well as teacher commoncies, also began to work with Department on the dashboard. We're kind of working our way through that, not quite ready yet, but we're working on that. Also done things like K-10 strategies. We think K-10 strategies are extremely important. Lot for learning, for those who don't know K-10. All of our teachers, over the next two years, will be trained in K-10. Also will be trained in project-based learning through the Buck Institute. So we did feel like increasing our student engagement, especially just the many challenges that we've had over the past couple of years. By challenging them, also engaging them. And I'm not going to use that as a buzzword, but use that as a word that lets engage our students. Making sure that they're, that they know why they're doing the work they're doing. And they can explain to you why. That's why the likes of Learning, Defensive Learning, excuse me, Defensive Learning, the big. And for our teachers, now even say, you didn't, you didn't give them a stipend, and that's true. But we did send our teachers that volunteered being LC innovators to the, to the West Coast, to the High Tech High, and the Deep Learning Conference the last two years. So they have received the opportunity to go out west and see folks that maybe have done this for a little bit longer than we have. Our next steps, in addition to growing the programs we currently have in place, will be to develop our pillars of success. That work is started. This process has begun. And it will include student performance, student growth, student readiness, student well-being. That was identified at our last meeting with Katie Martin. Transition readiness. One of the things that we thought was really important, we all know it's important, is kindergarten ready. Leaving, exiting the primary, exiting intermediate, middle school, and thus leaving the high school ready to go on to transition into whatever the next steps may be for this, the young people to graduate. As we planned in phase three, we seen growth in our transition readiness through our defensive learning, through the presentation learning. That's our passion projects, dual credit, industry certification. The importance of transition readiness is embedded in our core curriculum. I know we often talk about the struggles that our students have had through the pandemic. And what we, in Logan County, I'm sure our friends in Russell and Todd County are doing the same thing, is we really put a focus on core instruction. Let's go back and revisit core instruction to make sure that we're teaching it at the level it's supposed to be taught, and when it's supposed to be taught. And then following that up with strong interventions. We know that intervention piece is a key to growing our, growing our students and closing the gaps that have unfortunately been created. We have here, Logan County, our two pictures there. That's the Health Sciences Academy graduates up on the right. And then on the bottom, that's Logan County data, 2,684 credits, college credits through Logan County High School, 83 industrial certifications, 209 AP credits, $3.1 million in scholarships. One thing I would like to add on there is, you take that 83 industrial certifications, up to 136 certifications, when you include Russell and Todd County in this. So just imagine over 2,600 college hours when you're leaving high school and how much that would affect the pocketbook of our parents and give more opportunities for young people to go, go on to college and work at community colleges or four-year schools. One of the next, and all these are just in or fanbent in from our, from our strategic plan. Our next one was school safety. Our goal in phase four was to continue prioritizing school safety and updating our facilities, which we've taken many measures to do. This summer, and right now, what's next on the phone? Wrapping up, safety vestigils, which will be now at all five of our K-8 schools. One of our schools already had it, the other four have it. Next summer, you'll see a safety vestigo that will be put in at Logan County High School along with some other renovations. Another thing that our board did, hands off to my co-chair, Kenny Robertson. In accordance with House Rule 63, our school board made the important decision to have school resource officers in every building. We made that decision along, teaming up with our friends from Logan County Fiscal Court and our Logan County Sheriff's Department. And we're in that together. We've done trainings together, we do tabletop exercises, just enhancing safety, making sure our parents know that we value our students, and we want that to be said. We've also ordered a thought mountain comprehensive to hire mental health therapists. We have mental health therapists in every school. At the high school level, we have multiple mental health therapists. We're also establishing several social emotional learning programs, like Second Step, as well as Care Solid, to provide our students multiple social emotional learning opportunities. And this was the one, if you didn't see our survey, you may have said, you know, why is this in your strategic plan? But if you drive our campus, you'll see that we have absolutely wonderful, beautiful athletic facilities across campus. And opportunities for our students to grow co-career, or extra career. So this survey that Dr. Young said had over a thousand responses, it screamed at us, we're not doing enough for the arts, we're not doing enough for those students. I mean, so what we, what we did, and I'd like to successfully say it last night on this strategic plan, is at the August board meeting, we approved a BG1 that will include upgrades and renovations to Logan County High School. This includes updating the art room, choir room, a new band room. But date other facilities like family consumer science, FFA, and instructor classrooms. Most of all, the community really wanted, since that building opened in 1983 or '82, is that new 550-seat, 400-yard center. So we're really proud of that work. And Kenny Robertson, the lead in those, our board chairman. We're just really excited that all of our students, we want to make sure that every student that walks through doors of Logan County School, preschool, big 12th grade, see that there are opportunities for them, there is a place for them in school. And there's an adult that cares about them at school. There's also, if they need help, guess what? We've got help for them at school, whether it be academically or socially emotional. So I say those things, and go do that strategic plan all the way fast to say, thank you for allowing me to share. It's always fun to share, but you got some successes. You have a lot of positive momentum. It's great to share, but you've got partners like Larry Bagley and Mark Thomas with you to help, help with, do everything. It's great to have those partners, you know, understanding and walking forward. We appreciate what the state board does. We know that you all have some tough, tough challenges ahead. We wish you the very best. Thank you for letting me share. And thank you for being in Logan County. Wish you the best the next couple of days. Thank you.
So much, Superintendent Muller. It is really heartwarming to see the great strides you guys have made and continue to make in Logan County Schools. We see that Superintendent Muller has had some challenges and a lot of one meaningful surgery he's given us today. And we appreciate that so much. And I just think we just presented a masterclass on the implementation, the early implementation of people learning in Kentucky School District. So yeah, that's what we're talking about. So thank you so much for sharing and the strength of me in Russellville, Logan County. Thank you Superintendent Thomas, Superintendent Bagley for joining us today. And for all of the administrators, Mr. Spears from the high school, all of you who are here. We really appreciate it. From the sub-line to the ridiculous pair of chairs, which you please call me. Joanne Adams, here. Ollie Floodworth, here. Jamie Bowling.
Here, here.
And Trudy McQuary, here. Randy Poe. Sharon Robinson. C Todd. Steve Trimble.
Here.
Lou Young. Here. Joanna Stevens. Here. Lou Dahlé. The Chair, you do have a quorum. Thank you so much. Also playing part with us today is Bowling. Thank you so much. I know you are not feeling well, Triple Wendy in Middlesbrough today. We're glad you're here. And thank you, Mr. Trimble, glad you're here as well. The next item as we turn to internal board, this is the summary minutes for August 2, 2022, K-10 Awards Session. August 3, 2022, K-10 Regular Meeting. September 12, 2022, K-10 Corporate Alert Subcommittee Meeting. And September 15, 2022, K-10 Corporate Alert Subcommittee Meeting. And finally, the September 29, 2022, K-10 Awards Committee Meeting. These will all strip and interview for the portal in advance of today's meeting. Will we add any corrections in the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve all of these minutes. Take a look. Thank you, Ms. Lundworth, second. Dr. Poe. Now, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please just slide by saying aye.
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 Thank you. The next item of business is our K-10 Goals and Legislative Priorities. As you know, this is what we call the short session coming up in Kentucky. And I would like to turn it over to our legislative liaison, Brian Perry, to share with us how we got to this point. You also have a hard copy of our proposed goals and legislative priorities that you speak. And you can find these on the portal as well. Brian.
That's great. So first, I just want to thank the Chair and Vice Chair, the Commissioner, and Dr. Flurmer for getting this process going quite a bit earlier than I think it's been done in the years past. Because I'm sure most of you all realize the legislative process, it's slow in time, but in reality, it goes back pretty fast. So it feels like we just finished the budget session, and we're already starting to talk about the next budget session. So while the goals that you have before you are already probably a 23 legislative goal, I would encourage you to think more of these about the start of your budget goals, goals and objectives. Because these are kind of big overarching goals that will kind of inform your decisions starting about Ben Brue, or Robin Keen, as you work through and down. More specific asks related to these big overarching goals. Right, so one of them is about equitable funding. So what exactly is that going to look like after this process starting with this? What exactly is going to ask for, especially if we head into the 24 budget session as it relates to equitable funding? I know that Dr. Argus and her team are really interested in putting forward a suggestion to equalize funding across each program, for example. That'll be a very specific ask. That's kind of an example of where this document, I think, will go. And I think it's really important, this will really help me as we go to get posted or reviewed before the session starts. And then as myself, the policy advisor, starts to go to get files in the session, this will guide us to think about what the department stands on various goals they aspire to file and be. So this is an important document. I don't want to make it sound like it's not. It's just really sort of the start of what'll be a kind of long process, I think, beginning of the next school period, which we will then start hopefully shopping around very specific apps. So we're going to be, in deciding where those apps fall in the legislative process. Or what will be in the next budget bill review versus what will be separate legislation for there for being a sponsor and starting to build support, and that's for. So that's kind of the process for what's going. And while we have a talk today, it is a really important first step. I would love to be a multi-month process, get down to very specific app. And we start the next school period. Hope you're headed to that.
Thank you, Brian. We always rely on you to have your ear to the ground, so to speak, about what the rulings might be as we get ready for approach the short session and the budget session in '24. So one of the things, as you give us information about, through this conversation about this and that, you'll begin to see how our four goals and the early legislative priorities begin to align around that. So Brian, what are any here?
So again, I just kind of looked on the radar for the session, we kind of talked about how they tie back to the goals and priorities. So we heard on top, Colonel Wright asking what, that it really come on strong? I think there were certainly some versions of this. I think that will likely play out similar to how we called in the art school play out last session. Where we'll likely see several versions coming out of the house, but much larger. And then we will probably see, I think you try to moderate that a little bit with one deal. See how that conversation goes. We haven't gotten scraps yet, but that's certainly something that's going to happen in the next session. The other one's going to be school safety. Obviously, this was a big topic earlier, we need to determine what they should be. Question here is, what exactly are they going to do that they haven't already done? We have had some preliminary conversations about some ideas for including, expanding access to national health services, what that might look like. So that's going to be certainly a top priority for, well, the other big topic that I'm sure we'll all have to talk about is the improvement of pitching. So we have already put forward some suggestions that kind of will lead, we think you can do that next session, expanding the student teacher scholarship, seeing some ideas going forward to obtain, which we keep. So then it's also some ideas about how they can expand access to national sports certification. Again, to help support early career teachers, first five years, three years, five years. So those are already out there. Those are kind of the big things. I think we're also going to see issues around proxies, like adjusting requirements to be a student. Obviously, that fleet over with CFP, so having that, that mentioned, the funding. We more talk about there, right now you can have a welding program at an ATC that was funded differently than one that was at a layback versus one that was in a high school. So Dr. Argus and her team are going to put forward an idea that would make it the welding stream regardless of the housing, regardless of location, funding would be a little problem. Yeah, so that's kind of, that's kind of on the radar. So we can look at the goals, go back to the goals.
Yes, so I think if you look, you know, we'll be discussing the Fisher's evaluation. He's put forward his goals for the coming year, which align beautifully with this conversation as well as state board goals. Certainly the vision work around United Learn and the L3 initiative, of which will be kept as a partner, as well as the alignment to continue on. But there are a couple of education potential, we begin to see this really tight weaving of some big ideas around the priorities of this board. And we hope that they capture your view as individual. And we hope that they capture your view as individual board members and us collectively in the frameworks. So at this time, I'll just build it up in a facilitated conversation about the legislative frameworks. Keeping in mind that we're on the Berkeley side of this as we prepare for the budget session. But there will be bills moved in this year in '24 as well. So feel free to ask the Commissioner, Brian, any staff, questions if you need more information or just general thoughts and comments about the priorities that they currently exist. Please.
So Brian, I would wonder if the Commissioner can speak to the degree to which the education is cool on less than around some of these major issues, in particular, the statewide workforce issues, statewide issues associated with student mental health themes, and how we respond to the safety concerns that we have for all of our students as well. And, you know, they're supporting their aspirations for their life, their future as adult citizens.
So about the workforce issue first, Professor Costa, the Kentucky Association of打名atators, has assembled a rather large work group of pretty much all the stakeholders, including legislators. They've met once in person, but they're getting ready to use online meetings. I think they are hoping to have some recommendations for the '23 session. I think realistically, they're going to have recommendations ready here in the next session, looking ahead to the '24 session. But I think it's really good that they have assembled this group. I think it did help them get everybody on the same page. It didn't talk about issues of prediction, how we get people on the pipeline, how we go through the pipeline, and how we session this first few years. I think it's a good step. I'm just not sure that they're going to have recommendations ready for the '23 session, given the 2011. So we'll see. But that is happening. I do think ahead of the '24 session, we'll have those stakeholders on the same page, especially in relation to what exactly we ask to fund it, in relation to that pipeline issue. So where do we think as a group money should extend? We saw something similar with the healthcare initiatives that the assembly did this session. So I'm hopeful that we will see something similar for education.
Also see the superintendent's platform. It is very similar also with some specific detailed recommendations when it comes to some of the items you talked about as well regarding the PPE sector.
But I will point out, this is a really good question because again, this goes with recommendations. So if it does take a lot of work, it gets the ask. So to use the equitable funding for CP as an example, David Worson, the other scholar, really spent over the last year or more kind of laying the groundwork for that, that now is going to really start to move forward, build support for that. You know, David has got a part of here, really getting ready to have a bill filed in '24, you know, move in. It is a good point that, but it does take a, the next part is that I asked Dr. Bird, Maggie Russell started earlier than previous years, was to get that ball rolling, to start to talk through these things and hopefully get ready for both this session and next session. Really start to move forward with the things that you all want to get done actually.
Other question, you're done to talk?
The state report cards are going to come out soon. What impact will the results of that have on legislative proposals we might put forward?
I'm not sure. It's not so sure. The, without tipping our heads too much to what the results are, I think we've all seen the national data and heard from districts who've been able to see for the last year and a half, the information that's come out of the formative assessments that they collect. So we know that our students fell behind what they normally would, how they would perform because of the pandemic and the disruptions related to that. I think what we will see at state when data is released will be similar to what we saw nationally with the data. That's two days of certain panic and hand wringing on behalf of writers and media. And then within schools, you'll have people that will go back to work and keep doing what they've been doing. It will not be a surprise if anyone's been working in schools, because they can see the data from the last two years. It will be a surprise, I think, to the public, although we did have data last year that largely showed the same trend as well. So I don't think it's going to be surprising, but it will confirm, I think, the challenge that we have ahead of us for the next couple of years. In terms of how it will relate to the legislature going forward, I'm not sure. We haven't seen any proposals related to that yet. It may cause more investment in literacy. We haven't seen sort of a matched or mirror investment and focus on numeracy. Those things will be welcomed though, the Department of Mickey Ray's work with the reteach and feed and reteach efforts and all the money that's been put into support about literacy through our COVID relief dollars have been focused like that already. So we welcome additional supports and resources for that. We know we've got a lot of work to do. Anybody that's working in schools here knows that work that we have ahead of us. Any support that we can get, like, to help lift that effort for the next couple of years, welcome.
And I will take that opportunity to point out that some of them have been sitting on how things shake out, those are looking great. And then leadership elections, we'll see some shuffling in both the House and Senate, more of this than any. One will be just retired, as mentioned. And then the House will see the 30% run over like the one we did. But on the House side, you see a kind of a leadership shuffle, cat's tail, retired, that'll put some leadership spots. So we also have a education chair that's retiring in the House. So a few different leadership roles that are going to kind of shake out will be really, I think, you know, picture of where they're headed in '23, '24. Something, maybe necessarily, but in fact, how things go.
My question was coming to a very distinct period to come, pretty changed the game a lot of children in the educational system. And I hope that the legislature responds to the need to catch up on that.
I think that's when they're going to rely on us, other education stakeholders, to come forward with some ideas and put some requests on the table that are related to that.
But I do think that's an important distinction in that the better job we do in taking care of business and anticipating needs for regulatory change, which we now control, that I think most likely it is that the General Assembly needs to be engaged with some of these decisions regarding construction and assessment and the work of this board. So it's about, of course, and I did no disrespect, but in terms of our being able to take care of business in time, when we think about the experience of many children over the course of the past two years, it's shaped the trajectory of the future. You will see that in the Fisher's board goals as well. And on that note, welcome, Dr. Thompson. We are so glad you're here. What would you like to add?
Why the beautiful building?
So glad you're here. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Cook?
I would just like to add, I think that for the last year or so, I think we've been preparing more, loving, ultimately expect. I have no idea how that's, that's where it will come out, because I don't see it. But I think the work that's making it together is done, that we're building on ladder and speaking, starting that up for others. So I think we also need to be proactive in knowing where those controls are, where they're coming out. But all the great things that we are doing, just like you heard Paul Hall say here, a lot of districts across the Commonwealth are doing a lot of great things, utilizing their SFR funds and different things. I would hope that as part of our message for polar to the legislators as well, that you're not going to tell us anything we don't already know. You're planning on this, we knew what was happening, these are the things, and I think get our united art learn program and allowing our districts to tell us what they've done for the last few years and prepare us to go. So it's not just the fact that, oh, read that data and see something that I don't already know or do, as the Commissioner said, in the assessment, we've known nationwide. Hopefully, our kids are coming out where they are. This isn't something you're going to catch up in one or two years. This is a process that you can, you know, the generation that they go to, all the high school.
Parting them in from you, Dr. Poe, and I think it includes the notion that the better job we do in telling our story about that we weren't caught unaware, but in fact are diligent and proactively supporting students as we were today moving forward. I think that's critical, the message that this board wanted to communicate to those who tuned in in our community interactions, and we certainly hear from the Commissioner at this week's engagement as well.
Because those last stats I saw from the smalls up there, when you look at what they've looked at done, I mean, I care about what you're doing, I care about the other things, but when I saw all those credits up there, that's going to help us to not so get into this 20, 60,000, 323, based on all those credits that they're earning in high schools. So that's showing them we're doing things, and it's just not what's on that test. What collectively that data that I just saw there, some people really celebrating. So I don't know how their desk board is going to come out here, but I would be celebrating when I saw it.
Very. Oh, we answered the question before we both count. That's the children's family. Brian, do you need anything else from us right now?
I hope these, I think, you know, I could come and add, in addition to what we want to ask for in terms of priorities and funding, but also be prepared to think about if anything we need to clean up, you know, any language that we need to work on, or the barriers that hold language out there that is no longer necessary, that it should be cleaned up. Again, at this time, we'll start thinking about that as well, and also certainly, you know, like, the office, a few items that we will put forward, but just broadly, we hear things that are creating barriers for districts, programs, which everyone consider all great. And again, it goes back to just what we can do ourselves, pay for them. On that side, we may take a budget issue, but anyway, conscious, asking for money, adjusting other types of changes, welcome.
And I appreciate that comment too. I just heard from Superintendent Morrissey at Greenham County last week about one of those items that the Commissioner has passed on to Dr. Hargis and Stephen CTE. So that's a good opportunity for us with the board to hear those things about some reg that gets in my way, some statute that is prohibiting innovation or getting work done the way it needs to be done. Feel free to push those along to the Commission. All right. Excellent. Thank you. That lecture out of the podcast. But I'll. How about us, the boards are entertaining motions to approve the 2022, '23 KGB goals and legislative priorities that we've set.
I'd make the motion we approve.
Mrs. Bowling, do we have a second?
Thank you.
This is McQuerry. Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? It's Gary's thing. The next item on internal board business is our commissioners and evaluation. In the portal, my apologies, I am the 11-hour uploader on this one. But first, many thanks to each of you for the offering of individual feedback from you around the Commissioner of his work over this past year, as he's finished his second year with us. The memo is the form in which the final and public announcement of the evaluation takes form. And also, you will see on that portal item, the updated and revised Commissioner goals. So those two pieces will go together. Before, we opened up individual board members and comments. I'll put Dr. Glass on the spot and have him make any comments that he would like to add. First, we really appreciate, I told you this on the phone this week, you are really self-deflecting, very self-aware. And I always appreciate how candid you are in your sharing with us about the year journey as Commissioner of Education in Kentucky. And so I thought this year's reflections were particularly insightful and helpful. And I also really appreciate the level of detail you bring to, here's what I've been working on, here's what my goals are, and here's what I still have to do. So that candor is much appreciated. So I opened up, if you'd like to make some remarks now, with your individual board members, and I'll give you the last word on that topic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just say that it's a delight to do this work in a state for this board and with the staff, more so than any other leadership role I've ever had. I have a level of support around the industry extraordinary, and I know that that's not accidental. This board was put in place and it was a sport, because they were the senior commissioners, and education in the state was a core delivery on that. The team that we have in the Department of Education that was largely a simple bypass commissioners, it was also put in place to support previous commissioners who may be supporting. So they make us look good on a regular basis. So it's a real delight to work with them. And to get to do this work in a state that has given so much to me personally, a state that I grew up in, it's an honor to work here and do this job. So thank you. I'll just conclude by saying, quoting the American industrialist Henry Kaiser, who said, "When work speaks for itself, shut up." And I think I'm maybe paraphrasing, but it's something close to that. So I'm proud of the work that we've done, have my collections of the documents they have, but thank you for the opportunity to do this work.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Board members, you will also, as I mentioned, see the updated set of goals from the Commissioner, and I want to call your attention to that document because after I was able to hear from you individually and made your feedback, I was able to have a conversation with Dr. Robinson and then with the Commissioner about some of the comments and suggestions that you had made about continuing the work. And he was able, he graciously accepted those recommendations and was able to incorporate that into his goals as well. For the viewing public who don't have access yet to the documents perhaps, although they are available in the portal, I would like to offer a reading of two paragraphs from the memo to Dr. Glass. During your first year as Kentucky's Education Commissioner, you faced not only the typical challenges associated with the transition to an executive leadership role, but also a global pandemic that affected all aspects of public schools that matter to state. That pain really proceeded into the early months of your second year on the job. In addition to the extreme challenges presented by COVID-19, Kentucky school districts suffered two catastrophic weather events in the form of devastating tornadoes in western Kentucky in December of 2021, and equally devastating flooding in eastern Kentucky in July of 2022. Through it all, your decision-making has been exemplary, and educators and other stakeholders across the Commonwealth have come to rely on your steadfast leadership. The remainder of the memo looks at the CTSFO FOMO areas, the Council for Chief State School Officers, which is the association of each of the heads of schools of state departments of education in the 50 states of the U.S. plus territories. They recommend this evaluation format, which includes technical leadership, human leadership, educational leadership, cultural leadership, and symbolic leadership. We asked each board member to weigh in on Dr. Glass's performance in each of those after having a chance to read his self-reflections. And then in addition to each of those standards area, I was able to call out some key areas that the board found to be commendable on the part of our commission to include strong, effective advocacy and loyalty, as well as communication with members of this board. In sum, the memo concludes with, "The board strongly supports your continued tenure as Commissioner and sincerely appreciates your outstanding leadership. We accept and endorse your 2022, '23 road goals and offer our resolute support of your efforts to achieve those goals." Keep in mind, as we have this conversation, this is a draft of the Fisher's evaluation. So I would like to open it up, give board members opportunity to share any individual comments that you may have. comments that you may have, any questions that you would like to probe. Keep in mind, Dr. Glass doesn't see your individual comments. So I have excerpted anonymous comments throughout the memo as I was able to synthesize your feedback across those standards area in order to get them a glimpse into the kinds of feedback that you shared within individually now in this room. So I will push and give you a chance to offer that same feedback or ask questions. Thank you very much, Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. How's it going to be here? As someone who's an ex officio in many ways, can follow on certain things, but I can voice it's always happy to voice many things. One of the pieces that I think should not go unnoticed is Jason's ability to work with people like me and others who are leading the state in education. He's been a wonderful partner. Not once have we not come to a conclusion we both could live with. That means we always agree on everything, but it means that we can come to consensus for the people of the state. And many times, we've done this, most of the time actually, in a place that people like me and I should be rooted in, and that is in the private setting and not open public. With that in mind, I think it would be fruitful for this board to understand that, I don't say these words lightly, for those who know me, no, I don't say anything lightly, but ones that are truthful, the amount of concern that he places on the continuum, the P20 cycle, I appreciate Dr. Poe's statement coming in. I heard you were right. The idea that focusing on the most important thing, which are our young people, but also the learning of our young people, so they get to a point whereby they can actually produce the next generation themselves, healthy, happy, and hopefully great economically, is a conversation that we have never failed to actually pull ourselves together to really look at how we do that in a manner that is systematic and very process-oriented toward a goal. So I guess I want to endorse, even though I don't have the ability, Jason, to vote in this case, I have the ability to say that I appreciate you being a partner. I appreciate you serving in the capacity you are, the manner that you're serving. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add, Dr. Thompson, that one board member, I don't have those in front of me right this second, but he did comment on how much they value the relationship that you and Dr. Glass have, Glass has developed in a really short time. And I think we had superintendent Governor that folks think about that triumvirate, people from secondary, he and workforce together, along with secretary. Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
I was impressed when you first came, commissioner, going around the state and opening up the conversation about education around the state. Too many times, I've seen that go nowhere. But in your case, you put an analytical process together to gauge the comments that came in and try to write a response in relation to what those comments were. And then you brought a concept to us as a board and to the state, a different way of thinking, deeper way of thinking, way that will give these children the chance to be real leaders intellectually. Collaboration with the population, with the workforce folks, and with the gentleman who just spoke is a rare experience in this state. The level of cooperation is so vital. We need to have gaps in our education system. One big gap is pre-K, 12 to college, and there's nobody really able to occupy that space. And the two of you plus that gap and the coalition is another level of collaboration you're talking about. When I see what you're doing here with the presentation, with your strategic plan, you're doing the right stuff. And I think it's going to take a failed job on our behalf and your behalf, make sure that, as Randy said earlier, our folks have been doing their job during this tough time just to survive what they've been through enough. But not only do they survive, but they challenge, they add in things, they brought student into the thought process in a different way. And we need to make sure that that doesn't go unnoticed. And I think that's the challenge of trying to sell. Too many times, you don't sell before the latest slide session. You have a hard time selling during the latest slide session because they're covered with lobbyists and other people who think they've got a real story to tell. I don't care what the great show, I think that's actually been at work. You have not backed off at all of the process that you put in place, which I really admire. You've been everywhere that's been a disaster, talk about the pandemic, forget about the current, the other thing in the state. But I sense the resilience that you've demonstrated to keep your focus on what you came to do in the state and replay that back to your partner.
As I listen to Superintendent Hollins today talking about the nominal things that take place in this area, very proud of those things, the way that you call in communities, the way you call in parents, call the students, you have done that on a statewide basis. And that was not anything in the state, but through your leadership, through the communication with your staff, through your willingness, listen, I see that for the first time probably in the history of the Commonwealth, we have a true year turn in education. And that's a whole new level for us here to know that the people of the Commonwealth are having a say about what happens. That's reassuring to our community, very, very for our students. So thank you for having me here. I'm enthusiastic.
I should turn that as a positive film.
Just like that, I think that, you know, this has been a very difficult challenge for anybody to do a very good job in the last few years, dealing with COVID and stuff with this, a lot of our superintendent administration across the Commonwealth has done. So, you know, with that, you know, reading over all these different things, I echo the different things that Debbie said. One of the things that I would just ask that you continue to do is what you've been doing, getting out there meeting with groups, as was just expressed, because I think the big thing going forward is our communication, telling our story, a deeper learning story, where do you really want to take Kentucky? You know, I've been around for a long time, you know, you have a vision, and that vision needs to, we need to percolate that, you know, across the Commonwealth. So keep that particular part up going forward. I would just like to add, reviewing the goal, one of the things, communication that I would like to see also add is continue your one-on-ones with some of the other board members. I know they're meeting bi-monthly, bi-weekly with our board chair and governor. But I think that voice is, was just said here about, you know, listening to superintendents across the Commonwealth, listening to Kentucky, getting those, and then having those one-on-ones. I think, I think that led to a lot of the good things that occurred this year that you hear and echo out there, just so that we know what's occurring in this world, you know, press releases and all the other stuff that's there. So echo the great job, tremendous job you've set, as Dr. Todd said, of the company catastrophic events we've had just this past year. You know, not one of those ones, you know, forget about those test scores, the fact that we're actually getting school down here and what happened just in the wild, the people away from here, and what happened in eastern Kentucky, helping those schools get back. You know, that's the leadership that's down. It's not just about test scores or everything. So I applaud you on getting around the Commonwealth because you also have a big job to do in changing those who are here effort.
Just to say how much I appreciate how much you've gotten out into places where teachers are. I feel like for the first time in a long time, a lot of teachers have recognized you and really know that they're going to share you, you know, speaking at conferences and, you know, working with all the different advisors and even coming to progress and all that. I feel like it's really kind of a thank you, and that makes you so much more accessible and much more likely that people will actually be jealous. And I feel like there's an honest hundred in that, as a little bit, you know, giving back, but I feel like that you're just very important and very grateful.
I will tell you though, Ms. Bloodworth, that I was with him at Letcher County Schools last month, not long ago, and a fifth grader came up and took on his coattails before you, Mr. [inaudible]. And hadn't got all my fifth graders. We assured that fifth grader that he was a really important guy. I'm not sure he bought it. [inaudible].
You know, I want to, I want to do embellish a little bit on Hollins and Landworth discussing the same. I think that Dr. Glass has provided authentic education leadership because he is a real important knowledge educator. And for those who have not yet been convinced of this work, it's professional work based on shared knowledge, it makes me especially proud to watch Dr. Glass among all board members representing what we know that could benefit the learners of this state and joining and being recognized as a partner, collaborator, and something valuable to offer, to offer time and dollars, and support for all, and to give this ground that you're willing to do. And I want to perhaps kind of, I was like, [inaudible] on this conversation. The more I read about and what his agency does, I mean, it just kind of makes me jaw-dropping on to the force of work of educators, not only at the local district level, but at the local school. And so I'm going to ask some things seriously about telling our story a little bit more forcefully and intentionally to help folks focus on how we can get better at what we're doing in every community, not to obfuscate or try to paint over the things that we may, you know, we just challenges that we have because of historic behavior, but we, we got issues in the job, in communities where we're not, perhaps in the middle or our sports hall. And I want us to create a force out there for folks to can tell the story from the perspective of their quality and tell it to people who are going to be making progress. I do not feel that we should be going to spit hints about preparing for 2023 session and certainly the 2024 session, making sure folks at the local level have informed their representatives of what they really need from this. And they might bring a whole lot of other stuff to say that's a policy, but I want policymakers to be, I want us to be sure that we have localized parents and tell folks what they need, how they think they know, and they're [inaudible]. Because, and I think we should be, frankly, more safe in helping to tell that story because it's an important story to tell. And creating an aspect of this department that we need to understand that our support and what we need to get there. So I'm really proud to be a part of these cheerleaders for our commissioner and our department, but I also want to avoid encouraging us to see where we can do better. And I think where we need to do better is on the advocacy side by informing that white and companies mobilize their voice. They still look into the P and what we need to do more over driver than what other folks and families need. So that's all.
Dr. Glass, when this board set about finding a new commissioner, we had very high standards. And I'm very happy to say you've exceeded those standards, standard. And I just appreciate all your excellent work. And that became most evident to me last year in November at the education summit. The excitement in that room and the people that came together and the vision that was shined, that all was a credit to you and others who come in too, that I think you were the one who really brought those people together, and I really appreciate it.
I am cautious of an all-day meeting at dinner on the grounds coming to the period for everybody today. So, Dr. Glass, as I mentioned earlier, I'll give you the last board there, and then I will give you this item forward.
Thank you.
Shut up. Thanks, everyone. Especially appreciate your engagement in the process. Thank you. At this time, I would then ask the board to entertain a motion to approve commissioners' 2021, 22, along with 22, 23 goals. Would have such a motion?
Make that motion. Steve Trimble.
Well, I think I heard Mr. Trimble.
Yes, I make that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Yeah, thanks so much.
My dog votes yes, too.
It has a really high [inaudible].
Very high marks for Dr. Glass, he said.
The next item on our agenda, we expect to be a little more [inaudible]. Evaluation procedures and communications procedures. Will we have a presenter on this one narrative? I'm sorry, I don't have one.
We do not. So in the portal, there's a recommendation to follow the same evaluation plan that we did this year. So you will provide feedback to Dr. Glass's reflection, and then the chair will draft the memo with support of the vice chair. And then there's also a communications plan that is similar to one we had last year outlining the different communications styles, which Dr. Glass will reach out to board members.
Thank you. So would you look at that item in the portal? Do you have any questions or would like the board to consider any donations from the approach that we used the past two years? Dr. Glass?
No, Jason, that's what I was referring to, the education plan I really referred to this part.
At this part? Oh, okay, excellent. Thank you so much. Specifically, the one-on-one meetings. Thank you. Oh, excellent. Thank you. Oh, all right. Thank you so much. Dr. Moore, including specifically the one of the annual one-on-one meetings, which more than one board member mentioned, have been very beneficial and satisfying. So, and we appreciate keeping track of who the support partner and how those. Commending with that one addition, I would then ask the board to entertain a motion to approve commissioners', excuse me, the evaluation proceeds and the communication procedures for 2022. Would you agree with that one addition? Would have such a motion? Dr. Robinson, second from Dr. Poe, further discussion. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. And this time, I'll turn it over to our lovely chair of the awards committee, Mrs. McCray.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, it is, it is an opportunity to celebrate all of the good and common wealth. So exciting to be able to share that with you. Kevin C. Brown serves Kentucky Department of Education in various roles from 2004 to 2018. And most recently, served as the Interim Commission Commissioner for Education from December 2019 to 2020. Brown's time at the department throughout 2020 was marked with significant challenges that called for strategic educational leadership and clear ongoing communication that was forward-thinking, action-oriented, and aimed at advancing efforts to educate, feed and support Kentucky to 50,000 students during their global pandemic. The priorities areas for the award that Kevin C. Brown changes from year to year based on the desire of the board. On behalf of the awards committee, I would like to share that the committee asked September 29 and that identifies following strategic priority area of the award criteria. We selected United We Learn. United We Learn is our vision for the future of public education. This vision builds around three big ideas, creating a more vibrant experience for every student, encouraging innovation in our schools, especially when it comes to assessment, and creating a bold new future for Kentucky schools in collaboration with our industry. These three big ideas, students, innovation, and community form the vision for the future of public education. United We Learn needs everyone in our commonwealth, educators, families, students, community members, and business leaders, working together to support our public school, bringing about deep and authentic learning experiences for all students. The 2020 Award seeks to recognize persons, groups, organizations, districts, schools, or post-secondary institutions who through policy and practice make it a top priority to champion United We Learn. The criteria for the award includes significant contributions and/or other efforts to champion United We Learn and its efforts to support the reimagining of learning in Kentucky by co-creating a vision for community, fostering local innovation, and advancing policy recommendations aligned with this work. At this time, I would like to move approval of this strategic priority award in criteria for the 2022 Kevin C. Brown Strategic Priority Award and have the chair for the board consideration.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I am already excited about this award and I think it does make big money. And I think Kevin would be much aligned with this. So thank you so much for bringing that forward, Patrice. And thanks to Joanna Adams, who has joined our small but light awards committee. Our board members, as you know, coming from committee, this motion does not require a second. If there are any discussions, any questions you might have, the board is in favor.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Let's hear from Jamie Doll. I'm going to assume that Jamie and Steve are all good. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. As you know, K E staff identifies for each board needing the items they consider to be non-controversial and more routine in nature. As a reminder, this item, which does require a vote, consists of the consent agenda that allows for approval in one action. The consent agenda was distributed to members in advance of the meeting to allow sufficient time for review. However, at this time, any board member who wishes to do so may have an item removed from the consent agenda and moved to regular discussion items. Do we have any such requests? Given that there are no items to be moved, I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda. Do I have such a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Motion from Ms. Bowling, second, from Ms. Adams. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Excellent. Thank you. At this time, we will take a brief break. We are a little bit behind schedule, but not much. It would take about four minutes for a bit of a bio break and then we will have our, are we going into committee now?
We are going to committee. So curriculum will stay here and the operations committee will be going to an adjacent conference room.
Excellent. And so if you would, please start to make it to your committee breakout room by about 2:40 or 2:41 and then we will begin to be in full session in approximately half an hour. Uh, thanks very much to both committee chairs and all the members of the committees for your work this afternoon. Uh, Dr. Todd gives the media, the beginning of the year, the leadership award always wonderful. So we were now able to hear the curriculum committee conversation around public awareness. So I'm delighted to get to hear that word. That's good. So at this point, I will ask, get back to my script. This time I'll ask Ms. Bloodworth to report on the actions of the curriculum instruction and assessment committee, please.
Sure. Well, during the week, we've received an update on the third and fourth portrait of a learner subcommittee member. On behalf of the curriculum instruction and assessment committee, I move approval of the Kentucky Portrait of a Learner and the proposed implementation plan. So I think it's nice that you all were able to hear that. We need to go back over that. Um, and I think you all were in here for most of that discussion. But there is.
Excellent. And I loved hearing the conversation about the addition of creative. Been a lot of time that I'll have to be talking about that as well. So on a motion from the committee does not require a second. So the motion on the table is for approval of the Kentucky Portrait of a Learner and implementation for the press. Any further discussion?
Take a motion.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Poe. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
And here it carries. Excellent. Dr. Robinson, can you hear that? I was going to say, well, I've joined watching this committee work and hearing the reports and it is really gratifying that we have reached a stage of discussing implementation and I really appreciate it.
I do, too. I really liked seeing how we worked and clustering subjects and communities around making a fair teachable thing happen. Dr. Poe, I really appreciate the leadership around that. I think in those meetings, I just think the whole time grappling with and thinking through repercussions of the decisions and conversations and everything. So I really appreciate that. Um, I'm thrilled about the way the portrait has unfolded, building on prior work, long before this board was established. Um, but moving forward into with the other United We Learn elements. And so I'm kidding about the potential of the future. I'm going to send a copy of the screen line, one page to Dr. Thompson. He's already said we've got alignment work to do around the Portrait of a Learner from preschool through post-secondary education in Kentucky. This work is catapulting us in that direction. When you saw the Logan County profile of success today, it's just a reminder that this work is happening in all across the Commonwealth. And I don't care where pulling the star or riding the star, either way that goes, it's the way we're getting the way time and I've heard about that. It really speaks to the broad understanding of the country. And yet in primary school, intermediate, middle, high, and one and a second year, we want them to have academic, financial offerings that we've always done really, really well. But we recognize that they are whole people, whole children, whole youth, and we want them to have these requisite skills and information that make them. Um, the amazing 21st century workforce that Kentucky so desperately deserves. So, I'm sorry. Blowing a little bit about that, really thrilled about that and thanks to the committee.
I'd like to add to that, Chair Young, that, you know, I think this is, this is the work that we all like to be on the board more. It goes to improving tax rates. They put that we got to do that. But, uh, but, but, but the work is tremendous that this committee did. And I want to echo what you said and, uh, because I think it's very important that as we go through and we go through the legislative process and talk about people that we're preparing here and so forth, is that we start telling our story about how these kids are doing these different things. Because ultimately, you know, what we see and what we shape is what's there. And as we continue to work on custom projects and, you know, the touching opinion of the work that we do with aligning this particular process to our next generation of kids and what we are doing, you know, and if, you know, a few years ago, we went career college in my thread, and I think that's what is, we're finally getting now, as you said, whether you're riding the star or pulling, you know, we're getting to that end process where we can now have a portrait of success. Now we can start working on those dispositions that a child needs to have to get to that portrait of success. And I know that we get a lot of pushback from, you know, education should be by parts. I don't want to go down that road, but the fact that what we've got to do is be singing that message because we'll have distractions out there, but when you go back to what do you not want your child to be able to do? These are the skills that every business wants you to have with a child gradually. So, you know, when we're in the legislative process, I'm down there preparing my other particular part of the job, the portrait of a learner actually gives us what we can start talking to them about. And when they say they don't like SCL, define what you mean by SCL. Because SCL isn't what they really need, you know, and that pushback is what we have. But if you want curiosity of a person, curious of learning and the success, then we can point to this. Now, tell us what part of this you feel. Because we've got to, we've got to play the offense in this, going into the future. Because I think we've been on the defensive as much with, with individuals now running offense because we can point to this and say, this is our work, we're working on it. So, I, you know, that's why we struck this committee to probably a little bit longer. But we did the work and we heard the voices and they were challenging discussions. Uh, anytime we lose, you know, that means it's challenging. I will say.
First one challenge.
Yeah. So, uh, that's why Holly told me I had to share that. So, um, kidding aside, it is, it is very, it is very, it's, it's work that's been needed and I just, the board commissioner made that to get us here to where we are because moving forward, we can all point to this. And as you said, there's 30, 40, 50, who knows the number of districts that already have a portrait of a learner. But isn't it great that we can now say we have a statewide one? And how does this match up, as you were saying? And how do we lead this work? I think this is very positive work and very critical moment in forward driving the work that we learn.
Thank you, Randy. I really appreciate the statesmanship in your comments, too, in that this really is a unified message. This is, this is an industry, it's what families work for their children, it's what educators have always been about. And then that usually, I think, is desperately needed in this, in those methods that I think big arms can get at that, in the conversation. So I'm excited to have to, Dr. Thompson?
Yeah, a couple of points. And I understand there's some, these operational decisions throughout the G O P's. But I guess I just want to say two particular things, and I think Randy has alluded to that in a little bit, in the sense that we do want to make a statement about what we want our graduates to know and how they know it, right? I mean, it is about working. We sometimes lose that factor, get involved in teaching conversation way too much. It's about work. The second item is that we're working on a graduate profile as well, for post-secondary. And it is about this, aligning in a way, and I think that's why we've done some early work on that alignment, but aligns in a way that's been different than what we've done in the past around the way we measure graduation requirements. So I'll just leave it there without pointing great detail because it's not necessarily all the time about what the learning wants. And so the idea that we're now focused, and I really like what you said, Dr. Poe, what we're now focused on are those statewide statements that are being reflected in the way, even though I know we get work, I get that. It is about making that statement. So I do want to, and I appreciate you standing at that because I think it now creates an opportunity for Mr. Glass, your crew, and my crew to get together and see how we do aligned learning. And I think that is a different kind of statement than we made in the past.
Excellent. Excellent. I think, um, I, I just love the potential for that. I think about something like triathlon, which, um, as Patrice said, at elementary, it looks like a, a primary, it looks like a thousand questions a day, but in higher end, it's like a year for research. And so that developmental nature and the transcendental nature of these kinds of skills, I think really is what we're, this is, this is the exciting work of this program. And I love thinking about, her chief is getting together on this one, too. All right. Thank you so much. Uh, Dr. Todd is going to report out a really contentious, angry, operations committee discussion. So go easy on him. Dr. Todd?
Exciting. Keeping our committee name out there, uh, the Associate Commissioner, Robert Kenny, led us through what she called the loops agenda. The Anchorage Independent School System sent us a long tax levying number. How did they implement the right one? And they did everything to make the correction of the, we now have to go back and vote on the correct tax rate. I'm pause for that. The committee members jumped in here and said something exciting by raising their hand.
I got nothing.
So at this time, I move the correct 2021, 2022 global district tax rate levy for Anchorage Independent School District.
And as you know, this motion coming out of committee does not require a second. If there's any further discussion or questions for Robin or Dr. Todd. Hearing none, all those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, motion carries. And many thanks to the team from Anchorage Independent for, um, very quickly recognizing here and making that right. So we appreciate the team members. Um, at this time, I would just like to know that we are exactly on time to the American tour. And, um, coming to the table is K E Chief Performance Officer Karen Dodd, as fore-shouted by Dr. Poe, a few moments ago, she's been updating us on the school, Kentucky United We Learn Council and, um, yeah, the CGSA grant from the federal government. After that. Uh, well, I'm going to go back and kind of catch you all up on how we've gotten to this point, but as you all reflected on the commissioner's performance, you very eloquently spoke to everything that has led us to where we are. So I'm not going to rehash all of that. Here is if you go to the first slide. I think you all are aware that we have gotten a $3 million federal grant for the competitive grant for the, uh, for the state's assessment. So we are moving forward with that. We have formed a steering committee. That steering committee is headed by David Cook in K V E, he's the program manager. Uh, myself and Meredith were part of that steering committee. And then of course we have our partners, Center for Innovation and Education, Center for Assessment, U K Center for Next Generation Leadership and Alliance Assessment, all partnering with us to form a steering committee. Uh, we're also in the process of hiring a project manager to help us with this project. Uh, we're currently crosswalking a one-year plan. Well, we have crosswalked the one-year plan that was put in place in case we did not get this grant. Uh, so now we're kind of looking to see what's in the grant and what do we put in the plan and making sure that everything is discussed. Uh, we're recruiting. Uh, we're recruiting members for the coalition, and I'll talk more about that in just a moment. And we're also developing an agenda for the member kickoff. Get to the next slide, Karen. So, we used three methods for recruitment. First, critical stakeholders. Um, we met with all the leadership at K V E and asked for individual names, organization names, uh, anybody who might be critical to have at the table as part of this council. Then we looked at, uh, an open application, put that together, sent that out, and finally community sampling. So, my team was able to just do a random sampling from across Kentucky schools, um, districts. We contacted the superintendent, letting them, letting them know that we're gonna contact their principals to ask them to find for us, um, students, or teachers, or community members or business leaders, who bring a unique voice to the table, somebody who may not generally have a voice at the table, while we're looking for those kinds of folks. So, through the critical stakeholder process, we invited about 22 people to the council, and so far, 18 of them have accepted. Through the open application, we have 202 applications that we are currently evaluating. And through the community sampling, we only received four R S C T for that, so we're a company part of it. So, we have about 38 members that we will be choosing from the application process. Okay, next slide here. Uh, we have three standing committees that will take up the council, creating a vibrant learning experience and recognize these, because these are the three big ideas. Set, that standing committee will support local communities, transform student learning experience, learn from what is happening in the field, especially related to deeper learning, project-based learning, local laboratories of learning, and portrait of the learner. The next standing committee is accelerating innovation, and they will support scaling of innovation within and across communities, especially for changes in assessment and accountability. And the final standing committee is building a bold new future with communities, and they will build a policy framework that's responsive to the need coming from communities that support a bold new future for education. So, the timeline that we have, uh, the application is now closed. By the end of this week, people have evaluated all of the applications. Next week, people informed as applicants who have been accepted onto the council, and then they will have a week to confirm that they go on to be part of the council. Uh, public notes will go out on October 31st, letting everybody know who those members are. And then we will have the kickoff meeting in November 29th and 30th. That is where we are. Are there any questions?
It's the only question I have. So, explain how this all, and help us back to what we stood, how that all of this is taking place. The, the council, the work that the council's ultimately going to do, and these people here, how they back them, report back to us, and whatever we do as a curriculum committee or not do as a curriculum committee. If some things are in the grant that's outside of ours, curriculum committee is something that's out, so where is our role, or play or not play?
So, will we bring it forward? Any recommendations that come out of any of those standing states? But they're, they won't be responsible for actually doing the work. I, I say hesitantly, because that, this group's really gonna come together and decide for themselves what their charter is. So, we really want to be that kind of open right now, before we say this is exactly what they're gonna produce. Want the members to have a voice for that. So, until they come together in November, it's not going to be to say exactly what they'll bring to you. But it should be in the form of recommendations, policy, or, uh, new initiatives, or, or things like that, and primarily things that could happen, I would say, at the community or district level. Uh, and then, of course, we have the committee in there that is for scaling those innovations. So, this would all be, and the way I'm seeing it right now, those would be the kinds of ideas and recommendations that would come back to the board, and then we're taking each side of it.
So, if I could ask, Meredith, if you go back to the three steps of the, I guess, what they're doing, I mean, you're looking at, then if you'll just tell me how that then falls into, we also have a, a grant out there on deeper learning, how do those mesh together? That was the third point of that one slide, of what I think was bringing them together, not this one. Uh, per your, you were saying, that there's three things that the committee is charged to do. Okay, so, how, how, so, I'm just trying, because our committee on our last thing was saying, the biggest thing that we wanted to know as a curriculum committee is how do all these things align? So, as a portrait of the learner, I guess, as a, as deeper learning, as United Learn and United Learn Council, how are all these connecting and aligned and going forward? So, one, you're coming back, or anybody's coming back on, on a separate piece, that they're actually making a connection with the other things. That's what we.
Yeah, so, actually, in that kickoff meeting, those council members will hear about all of that work. And it will continue to have the, from, from deeper learning, from the L3, all of those things that you just mentioned, will be brought to them so that they understand what is happening. We've got people from the coalition, they're part of the stakeholders that we invited in order to keep that continuity of what we learn to form the vision that we have today. So, I'm not sure, I, I, I'm not sure if I'm really answering your question.
Yeah, I mean, the question was for, like, for example, in our last thing, uh, one of the superintendents that, that were as part of our committee, Travis brought up, that L3 is working out here, but assessment isn't working with them. So, how do we work with L3 if we're doing capstones, we're doing other things? But would really need to have assessment here. So, what caught my attention was this, accelerating innovation, support scaling of innovations within and across our communities, especially through changes in assessment and accountability. So, I guess my goal is, is that if, if we've got deeper learning out here, we got United Learn Council out here, we got the L3s out here, that those communities are interacting, and I'm hoping that, that maybe it's this community or committee that brings it all together and aligns it so that we know when we're talking with different groups that it is aligned.
Yeah, and I think that certainly are. So, one of the things that we've talked about that each of these standing committees can do is to bring in additional, so, from communities that are actually doing that work. So, if they want to hear even more about that deeper learning that's happening in order to make decisions or, or recommendations on policies or, or practices, they can do that. So, if they know what's going on, or if they just want, if they've heard about something and want to bring in more people, they're, they're able to do that.
I think that's exactly right. I think you're thinking about the Kentucky United Learn Council, and a large, umbrella organization, that informs this board, and you're, you're thinking about what those structures will likely be becoming. And, uh, you've probably heard me say this before, I just mentioned it at the sprint summit last week, but, um, this is work around emergence. And so, all of these things are beginning to bubble up, take form, and become part of this larger ecosystem. So, there's not going to be a straight line drawn from L3 to full council to deeper learning co-op grant to SCL, but instead, think about a lot of interconnected lines, uh, what an atom may look like, uh, what a Google map might look like, the things kind of interconnected. And so, I do think that by the time we get to November, Jason has been really patient to let this work emerge, but now we're kind of in the place where the work, the emergence needs to excel, and borrowing from the running desert. So, now I think these things become clearer and clearer and take on more form as part of a whole. So, all of these are in this big Kentucky vision of United Learn, and, which has the three big ideas, and now this council is gonna put together a new design plan to begin to create high-level of those cooperatives to when this emergent picture is. So, and then I think we'll have a really strong communication platform to begin talking about the interconnectedness of all of these efforts. This is not the decision of the United Learn Council yet, but for me, I think it's the whole thing of the deeper learning ecosystem, that all of these things, if you think about a, a formal reason, all of those things have very particular, specific roles that contributes to the synergy of the entire system. So, no straight line drawing, but a lot of messy interconnections will begin to form. And I think starting in November and moving forward, that picture will get more and more, um, tuned in and clear as we move forward. But I really appreciate your comment, Randy, and when you asked that question, and I remember another board member in the commissioner's evaluation said, "It's still a little fuzzy. I want to see how it all comes together," but I think that's where we are at the end of the number.
Really?
Yeah, well, I was just gonna say, you know, back to designing a system, that we have our dreams and we build our hierarchies around that, and we can build an algorithm. I guess, I'm just wondering where that finally is down to from this al, this algorithm that we get that movement forward, instead of just talking about these different things? Or, one of the things that I, I think I've seen over the years is, we have multiple grants every time together, and we never have that synergy power to once and for all.
Synergy, we need spread and we need scale, right? So, we need to be going up and down and across all the time, and then hierarchic, so I think that's exactly.
And, and I know that Jason will be the, the driver of these different forces and getting those together, but, but I also, you know, ultimately want to know that somebody else knows that they are reporting to somebody else, someone along the line. But there is, there may not be a straight line, but there is a hierarchy and structure to get this work done, so that a year from now, we'll have thought in that.
And I think you were getting at that in the learning comment around what the aim is. And that, that's when Jason and the leadership team begin to operationalize at the agency level to, to bring this work to reality, to fruition.
Oh, I think that's really, we're talking about very important issues here. Um, and, um, I'm going back to that old analogy, um, the little, the field work, where you are trying to see how a particular student survives a different, different environment. And the thing that connects you is a set of questions, or the definition of things that you're going to watch for. So, I think that probably where we are is that problem of, you know, what data counts? What are we looking for in each of these efforts by way of knowing the impact on speed learning? The, um, impact on each of the, your community engagement, or what are the things that we're gonna start counting in order to understand if we're moving in the direction that we want to move, and if we're making the difference that we want to see made? Because we might be doing something that is, that really undermines our effort, and we don't count it, we don't know. I think across these efforts, the things that will probably, um, you know, backwards, it, it may, it may emerge as a matrix of definitions and data points that everybody's gonna pay attention to, because all of this work is happening in different ways, in different communities, and different organizational structures, but if they are disciplined by a set of definitions and data, a, a data collection protocol or discipline, then that ignites us, that helps to discipline us and organize us, and it gives us a way of thinking about how we're going to do this. So, I think we're at that stage where, um, you know, we probably got to start struggling with, what do we count in order to know that we're doing what we really want to do? And, um, not, it's easy to say and it's hard to do, so I've got all of this as a cavalier, you know, suggestion. This is the serious work of, of data collection across a collective, a professional and community, and I dare say political collective, that is, we should get this done, or not.
As an entrepreneur, I used to check that board charts, but when we started helping people who were looking to acquire the committee, they said, "You know, you don't like your board charts, but you gotta see how this thing fits together." And I was just sitting there, I drew boxes for each one of these conditions we have. How they connect, that may be what you're getting at, because when we try to go explain this to somebody else, we've got a $3 million grant here, we've got deeper learning here, we've got United Learn globally, I don't, I mean, I've had a hard time myself right now drawing diagram, but if I'm somebody who's not into this vocabulary, say, all right, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, this is how it all works. I think there's a, there's a job to be done to pull that together.
We actually had that conversation last week.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Uh, by the way, the touchstone on all of this, if they can add it in the report, so it all goes back to that, and, because that represents what the type of state law is for their children, for their future of education, I think. So, that report, culmination of, uh, thousand-plus interviews, streams of qualitative data, or interviews that were conducted. So, it's a debt, it's 40 long pages long, that's concentration of thousands of interviews that happened before that. So, it's complicated. So, we keep coming back to, how do we take that, thousands-plus interviews, fill it down to United Learn before, and fill that down further, and something you can put your arms around, wrap your head around, whatever metaphor it is, and have it make sense. So, there, from that comes the three big ideas, three things, fit learning, accelerate innovation, and collaborate with communities, and keep them in the ways, that's it. Coming back to those three big things. Now, the attractable problem in any complex change is how you divide up the work. So, one, complete coherence, you have one group that does everything. Of course, that's not manageable, but you can understand it all, because you have to work in the big picture. The attractable problem is how do you divide it up into the boxes completely, where the chunks of it are manageable and can be handled. That's why we work to identify these three main priorities, divide work into those three areas, the full council, that Karen described, really is an effort to have us, have centers throughout the whole state for people that are doing this work in a cage, and constantly getting the feedback on how's it going, what is the next thing you need to do? Because, uh, a quote that I heard that I'll apply here, it was in a different context, but it's about, it's not about expectation, it's about exploration. Not about expectations, it's about exploration. I'm asked continuously, where is all this going? What's it going to look like? How's this going to end up? What's your final product of goal? I don't know the answers for those things, and nobody here does. And I've heard me say before that I've participated in enough five-year plans, that by the end of the five years, nobody goes, that worked out exactly the way that we thought it would. Nobody ever says that. That's gonna happen here, so we don't know what the next thing is, but we have some broad directives, people in Kentucky have, have a mechanism to continually set how that's going, but back to agency, to use a board, policymakers to feel as we explore through this phase. And we've tried to think about, uh, how we can divide the work up in a way that it, it is manageable and can communicate with each other. On the assessment question in particular, uh, we have been asked, like, what is going to be the outcome of this? Like, what's the new assessment system going to look like with the statewide assessment plan? Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, yeah. Then we're asked, well, how are you gonna get that through with Washington, allow them to, allow you to implement any of the, all changes that you're, that are being considered? I don't know the answer to that, you know, or what I. But what I do know, you don't try some things, know what the outcome will be, and keep getting exactly what you've been doing. So, there's a disruptive element to this, there's an emergent element to this, both of which don't allow you to stand back and say, "In three months, you're going to be here, in three years, you're going to be here, in six years, you're going to be here." You can't draw a line through it like that. What you can do is say, "This is the direction that we're going to go, we're going to explore, but continue to gather information." We created some intentional ways to gather your information, and then adjust, and adjust, and adjust. Really, that's, that's the theory of the approach behind what we're doing. So, it's, it feels a lot different, for me at least, who spent most of my career working on logic models and things that were designed hierarchical and strategic plans that were designed to go A to B the same in a very linear fashion. But really, when you're talking about complex change, especially complex change, if it involves human beings, never works out like that. And so, you have to set these broad directions, get them, people in the state, listen, adapt, and move.
Yeah, I agree. But I was just going to say, I agree wholeheartedly for instance of adaptive change here, but as we do go through the adaptive change, you do have to have clear, concise communication from the different groups, because I think that different groups hear different things. And I don't know where that comes, or who makes the clarification for those groups. But I think that's the hard part that I have, is trying to explain the different initiatives going back. I mean, I'm fine with the three boxes of the things, that they all aim towards that, but ultimately, I mean, what we experienced in, in our subcommittee on getting through that Larder was that I'm hearing one thing and I'm hearing another thing. So, when we're hearing those multiple things, there, there has to be somebody with clear communication to keep the group, and I don't care about what outcome is from which group, but then, it's messy, but we've got to keep it moving forward, instead of shutting down and saying, "Well, that other group's working on that, I don't know what they're working on, but they're working on it." And I think that's been part of our particular problem in the past, of getting different answers from different groups. And all that I'm trying to say is that, at the end of the day, that we should have different things, and when we hear those different messages, be able to ask whoever's sitting over there right now, it's Karen, or whoever it happens to be, why are we hearing different messages? Somebody's got to give clarification for different messages, because that's what we spent a lot of time in our committee on, was the mixed messages from health read to assessment government. Seem to have clear direction in this conversation. So, I agree adaptive change. And you never know where you are when we started in, like you said, 30 months ago, three years ago, or 10 years ago. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we've got to have clear, concise things coming from the different groups, it's leading towards whatever the, you know, United We Learn is great, but if I can't explain, as Dr. Todd said, when I'm sitting down there being asked by somebody, if we can't explain it, and we're the board, then we'd have problems at the same time.
Very good analogy, but I do think you're, I agree wholeheartedly about that being your, at the end of the line, you've got to, I would say, we have, several, this is really funny to set off, so tell me, if I look at a little bit, but if you had all the ingredients for an amazing sauce in front of us, we can tell you what the L3 ingredient is, and what the deeper learning co-op grant is, we can tell you what those ingredients are, but we have that basil sauce, so that's the part I think that's really hard to describe in this process. So, your comments always remind me of to get really, really clear about what those ingredients are, what each one of those does, so that if we could say, maybe L3 isn't talking to deeper learning co-op grants yet, but at some point, they're going to be part of an amazing sauce, you know?
Great.
Agreed. Dr. Thomas?
I'm probably not in bill of this, as you all are, but I'm sitting here, listening to all of this, and, and I am asking, what is the North Star? You need to say this, but this is the way I inherited it, and you probably are not going to say this, but it's saying, this is what we promise that all of the gifts graduating from our hospital, with the diploma for that, is this element that we're talking about. It seems to be the North Star, at least from my bench, and I, I think it's North Star also to me, that they are going to be college and career-ready to come to meet me to build on. Point that I would make is, and this is probably now leaving our work background coming out a little bit, and saying, that if every group we're reporting out was the North Star that we're reporting out on, what are those elements by which they are connected to that North Star? It seems to me also is, and I don't take grants unless it fits in to my North Star, I'm not going to go with the grants on. So, the grants aren't unto themselves, but a part of the directed mission and vision that we have for the North Star. If we really believe that deeper learning, or we're making the statement that we want every student graduating from high school to have what we're talking about up and down the line, then it seems to me that the communication elements of that, how they fit in is fairly clear, and how they're communicating it out. I do agree with you, we give an elevator speech around this. We talk a lot about inputs, and we don't want to talk too much about outputs, because I'm no fool, but they are yet operational. But we do know what they are, well, we do know what they are strategically and visionally, that we want every student to be able to leave us with those elements that we're talking about. So, I'm just saying, as I listen to this, that's the thing that I haven't heard its voice as clearly as possibly we should have.
Want to end something. As did you, started out drawing a box for United We Learn, I was going to figure out what fit in there. If I thought about it, is what you said, profile of the learner's whole approach. Heard that, I would look back at United We Learn book, but I liked the analytical approach you took in pulling together the ideas. There are thousands of ideas, but you put them in categories, and it's possible that each of those categories is something for doing. Address that category, I'm sorry, address that purpose, to create this profile of one connecting. Think if we go to legislature, populations, like Karen said, the North Star's profile is learn, it won't be different, it won't have thinkers, memorized, and things, so forth. And this piece is broken, this aspect of it, this piece is broken, this aspect of it, and it sticks together. I agree, we don't know what the outcomes will be. I had to live with the outcome of a top 20, this is a top 20 goal, as well, I don't want to begin with the end of life that day, given something that there was a probably going to ever be reached, so I won't actually. But you've got to work towards something. And I think the thing that is pure that we work towards is sticking. And then, I think we should be able, if we're not, if each of these things we have going, don't go toward that soup, then there's trouble. Wouldn't be doing them, because I don't want to do it. That's the bottom of the bigger picture of the soup, I think, and having these things that input. And then, you can defend everything you're doing, but first, take a cross-stick, and you can say, "That's not good here." You think, you know, if you can pass a test, you rank highly in the nation, something that want to change from the open mindset of this whole assessment process, too.
I've heard that commissioner said several times, that we envision that the change for learner experience for good, then we are, one more time, we'll be taking it from two to nine, and I will be, my very, so, Mr. Campbell?
I did not have a comment to make.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to. Okay, sorry, sorry, I just didn't want to ignore you, thank you.
So, one last point about the place that we're in, is that when it comes to the measurement of outcomes, part of this strain we feel is that, look at the concepts that are identified in the portrait of the learner, and they're things that most parents, teachers, community members would say they want for their students. And when you talk to business leaders, it's the things that they say they want out of their employment. Look at the Logan County strategic plan, even have the free access opportunities in the arts coming through. So, those things are what people want out of their education system, they want more of their children. Part of the strain that we feel is that what we can't measure reduces all that to a very narrow set of things. So, when we start thinking about changing assessment systems, accountability systems, that we're not going to measure those terms, that's a stretch, it's hurting us, and go into that next phase of things, we don't know exactly what that looks like or how that works. But that's, that's going to be the part of the journey.
No, that Karen? And I Karen? I know we're, you're still working on the agenda for the November convenings, but again, thinking about the communication elements, the things we can do to bring that clarity or mutation, you know, knowing that we're in the ambiguous mental state of the work, I think would really help with the outcome.
Well, it's just that the, again, the purpose of this council is to have a sensory system in throughout the state, where you're able to have the pulse on so many things. So, as the next challenge, if you can't even articulate or identify, you know, comes up, the council can involve us, and you can adapt and address that, the next thing. So, it's a, it's a way to make sure that we're not a top-down, driven, or directly forcing things to go a certain way, you're sensing from what's happening, then adapting and according to what the commission says.
But it's not so squishy, that stakes in the ground won't be placed, we know that there will be outcomes attainable, outcomes that Karen was talking about, for the work all along, that we just accomplished a huge amount of people in state that will contribute to the learner today, so, and yes, I am equally as impatient about wanting to get to the news that's in accountability, that comes to those priorities anyway, but we, but we have to trust the process, and Karen and I don't say trust the training. We're not making, on how we, so.
Dr. Pella, I did want to say, I think a lot of the communication issues will somewhat be addressed through the actual formation and meeting of the council, because we will be responsible with onboarding new members and making sure they are able to provide that feedback to Dr. Glass in reference, and so, in that process, then we figure out what messages are unclear and what information needs to be provided.
Thank you. More supply to the initiative, we're trying to go with Karen. Okay, Tom?
Board members in your package, you've got the October 22 hearing officer report, which is where you, where regulations are in the process, but that requires no action, but your part, the action is required, however, is statement of consideration admitted after comments version 704 KAR 3005 minimum requirements for high school graduation. That comment period ended on August 31st, and the agency received two comments, both internal, both inside page. The purpose of one of the comments was to address our homeless and foster student population of the regulation, and then the other was to improve the reliability of the regulation. So, I have Dr. Thomas Wood, and our chief academic officer, Ray Walther, the comments that we're receiving, changes the proposal that we're looking at.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, with the words. I'll start with section one, that was connected to the comments made internally by the Office of Teaching and Learning. So, we clarified the definition in my office, for the early graduation program, that was slightly amended. We also added the definition for graduate early to conform with a new section of the document, without this text in just a moment. And then, we also added the definition for continuity of services plan, that we have in the line of section 11. Five, which is the primary early graduation program section of the regulation, we need to state technical amendments to improve reability throughout that section, and we also added in the 2223 early graduation program requirement, this will better understanding in the field, because we know what was happening this year versus what will be added in the forward. And then, last was the section 11, that was based on the comments from the Office of Teaching and Learning to board, and this was identified as a need, they have regular meetings with the cabinet for health and family services. And so, it was brought up, and there was a need for this continuity of services plan for students who graduate early. So, this new provision will allow students who are under 17 to receive this support from a continuity of services plan, so that they will be advised on the services that they could potentially lose upon an early graduation. So, this is very similar to the existing transition service plan, but that is for 18 years of age and older. So, this is the primary changes. If you have any specific questions, you have to set up the rest of the process. In section 11, if you're wanting to take a look at it, it is the last section of the regulation.
It's the. Any questions for me? Just a reminder about what's the timeline for the change, after the changes have been.
Assuming that the board approves those, we can file them, I guess, like we have filed this on by the 14th of October, and then, at that point in time, they will go before the March review, or review, and it's November, Phoenix, that's when the legislative review will occur. After it finishes, the R's review, it still has about three months to send this to the board. You're looking at three months for me, that's a long time.
Public comment, okay.
Public commentary is closed, and that's what we're responding to.
Hearing the other question, I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve statement of consideration for 704 KAR 3005 minimum requirements for high school graduation and the proposed after comment. Have such a motion. Dr. Robinson, is there a second?
Second.
No further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, Commissioner Pampa saying aye.
Aye.
No? No, she carries. Excellent timing, everyone, today. It's so, it's so great to know the level of engagement and thoughtful discussion that we're always enjoying as a board team, so thank you for that, and sort of all productive meetings. Enjoy our evening in Logan County and Warren County. We will reconvene tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. Central time at this location. At this time, I need motion to adjourn and argue. Dr. Pogue, always telling you for adjournments, this is blood work. No discussion warranted, all those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Enjoy your evening.